I call this public meeting of the Eagle Mountain Saginaw Independent School District to order. Let's ensure that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Welcome everyone to our inaugural meeting in our new boardroom. We're all pleased to have you here with us this evening. Let's jump right into reports. Did we have anybody sign up to spell for something? No, did not. Okay. All right, then let's move into our operations report. Our first is the quarterly demographic graphic and housing analysis. Mr. Templeton.
Well, good evening, Board President. Where's the Board Superintendent Chadwell? It is my pleasure to be with you. Wonderful facility. I can tell you, I've been in a lot of board groups. This is the coolest that I've been in. It was exciting to walk up and see. Well, I'm going to touch on the economic conditions first. And as you're well aware, things have changed quite a bit since the past spring. The unemployment rates have improved. The unemployment rates are about 3.4%. We have a very conflicted economic conditions right now. I'd say conflicted because on one hand, we've got low unemployment rates. We do have job growth. We have wage growth. But on the other hand, we've got the highest inflation that we've seen in over 40 years. It's in every index in the economy. It's in food. It's in energy. It's in services. And so this is creating some challenges. And now we've got the rising interest rates. And we've seen a huge change in the interest rates from the spring to now. As you know, they raised rates again last week. There's talk that they could raise again in December. So we know the cost of housing is continuing to go up. And it does have a pretty significant impact. But overall, the DFW area is experiencing job growth. It is forecasted to continue to have job growth through 2022. Could see a little different outlook in 2023. But it is somewhat cloudy when we talk about economic conditions. Just to give you that perspective about what the rising interest rate is doing to the cost of housing, this is a slide on the left part of that slide is illustrating a 3.5% interest rate on a $343,000 priced home. The average monthly payment would have been about $1,905. And then we go to the fall. We've got a 7% interest rate. And now the actual interest rate's about 7.5%. So it's increased since when we made the slide. On a $365,000 house, due to the inflation of the increase in the cost of the house, that monthly payment is now $2,765. So roughly, this interest rate change is raising the monthly cost by about $800 to $1,000 a month. That is problematic for younger home buyers. It's also problematic for the move-up home buyers, the home buyers that are currently in housing that have a low interest rate. So they're likely going to be kind of waiting and seeing what happens before they make that decision to move up into a bigger house or to a different neighborhood. Now, when we talk about what's happening, big picture for single-family housing across the DFW region, this graph illustrates total new housing for DFW region. You can see in the second quarter of 2022, 2020, excuse me, second quarter of 2020, that's when we started to see this separation between starts and closings. You'll notice that the starts really accelerated. The closings lagged behind. That was because of the increased time it took to finish homes. It was also supply chain challenges and labor challenges. Now, what you'll notice is, as of the third quarter, that's starting to correct. So we're seeing a significant drop off in starts. You'll also notice that the closings hasn't really picked back up. That's because, again, we've got the length of time to get homes finished. And because of the rising interest rates, we have seen an increase in cancellations on contracts. So the cancellations on contracts has literally priced out some of those buyers that signed contracts late spring, hoping to get those homes finished over the summer. But then the rising interest rates have likely caused them to no longer be able to afford, or they're changing their minds, but there is an increase in cancellations. You'll notice that we are seeing an increase in inventory of finished vacant homes. We still have a large number of single-family homes under construction. So the builders are in a little bit of a pickle in that they now have inventory and they're now using incentives. They're using all kinds of incentive measures of upgrades and cash to closings to help move that inventory. Some of the builders are actually turning some of the inventory into rental. So we are seeing that as a trend. The mountain family side, we are seeing a little bit of a drop in the occupancies, which also means we could see a softening in the rent rates across the DFW region. Based on annual closings, Eagle Mountain Saginaw is in the 11th spot with about 1,070. We've got 1,293 annual starts. That inventory, which is homes under construction, finished vacant, is at 822. We've got 2,427 vacant developed lots and about 17,800 futures. Keep in mind, when we see this kind of an impact on housing, it's not going to stop housing, but it is going to slow it down. So we are looking to see a slowdown in the single-family construction rates going forward. You can see what has happened year-to-date in 2022. We started 391, so year-to-date, about 1,130 starts. I suspect that number's going to be around 1,400 to 1,500 for the year, a far cry from what it was in 2022. So it's getting closer to what it was prior to the pandemic. Prior to the pandemic, we were at about 1,600 starts. So it's moving back down to that area, which would be closer to a more normalized number. Now, breaking it out by elementary zone, the Eagle Mountain Elementary Zone has the highest amount of annual starts with 463. Second most active is Comanche Springs, 8.180. So we still are seeing some pretty significant starts in those elementary zones. Again, look at that under-construction column. We've got 748 home, single-family homes, under construction during the third quarter. Those builders are going to move that inventory. It just may take them a little bit of time. They're going to be doing it through incentives to, we could see some softening in the pricing. So we are starting to see softening in pricing. On the existing home picture, we're also seeing an increase in time before they close or sell. So that is also likely going to start to soften this escalation of pricing. Now, here's the, look at the projections. This year, we had 707 enrollment growth. This is from enrollment from a few weeks ago. That number's likely gone up a little bit. I do think we're going to see a continual growth during the year from that under-construction number. Those homes that were, you know, that, it's almost 800 homes that are under construction. They'll get finished and turned and sold over the next few months. That number's going to go a little bit higher. We have softened it down to about a 2.6% growth for next year. I really feel like this spring, the first and second quarters are really going to give us a good indication as to how the economy is responding, how the interest rates are impacting it. The interest rates being risen is an effort to slow inflation. So should inflation start to slow, we could see some easing up on the interest rate, which then could help spur back up the single-family construction. Here's what it looks like at the campus level. You'll notice even with the slowdown, you still have campuses that are pushing capacity. So you still have capacity challenges, even with the slowdown. We saw this in 2007 and 2008, when we had the housing crash. It didn't stop it. It just slowed it down. And that's what we're seeing here. This number could slow again. I'll make another adjustment possibly when we look at the first quarter numbers and look at what happens in the spring. At the secondary level, it's Wayside Middle School that is at capacity right now. So it's going to surge above capacity over the next several years. Then we've got Prairie Vista, which is approaching capacity in 2024. We're in pretty good shape at the high schools. Key takeaways, then I'll be ready to answer any questions. DFW is continuing to experience job growth. We will have job growth through 2022. The rising interest rates are impacting home sales. Builders will move the inventory through added incentives. And some builders are actually converting the inventory into rental property. The district enrollment growth this, for the fall of 2023, will likely be at about 2.6%, so a little bit down from what we saw this year. The district's enrollment in five years could be at about 26,400 students. And we'll use the first and second quarter housing data to really reveal the impact from the housing, the rising interest rates. Be happy to answer any questions.
I have one on the, on the district housing overview by elementary zone. If you go back to that one, that one. So all the ones was zero there, Northbrook Parkview, Remington, Saginaw. They have no plans to add on. So those, those kids that are in those zones, that's pretty much what we're going to get. They're just going to cycle through first, second, third, and, and go on there. So as we add the Elizabeth Hatley Elementary School, those are going to stay the same. And we could use maybe some of the ones that are going, because like Bryson, I'm trying to get to my point. But Bryson shows very little growth there coming up.
So there may be some opportunities to look at the attendance zone picture to see if there's some ways to utilize capacity. I think that's what you're alluding to. Yes, that would be something we could look at through the attendance zone process.
Okay.
Questions?
Well, pleasure to be here. I guess I was the first presentation in your new boardroom.
First presentation, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Timstern. Next, we've got the construction update, Mr. Welch.
Tonight, we'd like to start out with Eagle Mountain High School. And this is an aerial view on the north side of the property from about 300 feet up. And you can see the structure for the main academic building, the steel and some of the slab being poured there. And then in the first blue thing that you would see there, that is the fine arts facility. As you move along, you have dance cheer and gymnastics. This is just a western side view of the property, just as kind of the same things. But you can see it's a very large site for 140 acres. This is the area of the fine arts and gymnastics. So you can see they're progressing right along. Just a close-up of the main academic area with the steel structure, the elevator pit. So about two weeks ago, they started really working on the paving component of it. And they poured a lot of it. In fact, go back to this one right here. You can see on the bottom of this picture from where they, they poured that paving for the west side of the property. And they've already extended it over to the south also. But they probably got enough steel down for three pours. So we're moving along on that. Just mother nature's kind of the problem currently. This is concentrating on the stadium, where you're looking at the fieldhouse structure, the grade beams, some of the support walls. And the one on the left, that is the grade beam for the home side. So we got to drive down onto the field and the muddy field. And so that's kind of a field view, looking into the visitor's side. And the one on the right is the grade prep for the auxiliary field. Any questions about the high school? Anything? Okay, Elizabeth Lopez Hatley Elementary School. So this is a good aerial of this property. It's on, this picture's from the north side of it. So you can see the main entrance. What you see ported in concrete is the gymnastics area, Gym at the Gym. And then you have the kitchen cafeteria, and they have poured the rest of the library as of this point. And the ICF construction is going up. And this is a great aerial of the grade beams. You can kind of see the structure of what that's going to look like. And just a close-up of the slab, the ICF. And I couldn't pass up the grease trap. But when we talk about cleaning that out, it's, that's an elementary. And you can see how large that oversized tank is. Yeah, just some road work, getting some trenches in. So that's got some of the best topsoil in the school district, but it, and it's really, it's a great site, but once you get a certain depth, you find the hard rock. So just to help some of the drilling, they've brought the trencher in to get through some of that hard rock so they could get the GOLs progressing a little faster. And Wayside Middle School, since football's over and all those activities are kind of slowed down, they're working on the prep of that track and getting that ready for us. Just kind of waiting on the weather to finish up that project. But everything right now is on schedule. You know, the rain, we'll just kind of have to play that by ear. But on Hatley Elementary, December 12th is when the steel shows up. So as long as we make that timeline, that puts us in about the same thing as we had with Lake Country schedule. So, and if you remember, that's the earliest we could get it. So once we established the contract, we just got in line. And we released an early package on that, try to help that process out. Construction-wise, that's all I have tonight. I appreciate the question.
All right, then you have a attendance zone update for us, Elizabeth Lopez Hatley Elementary School?
Dewayne and I will work on this together tonight. Okay, so we've started the process with Elizabeth Lopez Hatley Elementary School Zone for the opening of next year. We've sent out communications and to have our meetings, and we had those last week. As far as the agenda, we've basically followed these things. We, the purpose of rezoning, the process, the timeline, the key points, our considerations that we looked at with the help of Bob's group, the 10-year elementary forecast, and then the proposed attended zones. What I would say about the 10-year is what, when you look at that forecast, what Bob basically said with interest rates, that has slowed. I mean, we're right in the middle of construction and interest rates go up. So that's going to slow us down for roughly two years in there. So it'll start as a very, you know, a limited amount of students, and it will grow into its own. So that's the biggest thing, I think, is, as Dewayne goes through this, is you'll see is just the small number that we'd opened with. In the future, that does give us opportunities if, however, we decide to do anything in the future bond, where we need to put some students for a year. So there are some opportunities there if we choose to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. So what Mr. Welch and I shared last week, we had two meetings, one at Bryson and the one in Comanche Springs. We had a few residents that attended, not very many. But we did go over this, this presentation with them. So as far as the purpose for rezoning, as Bob was saying, even though with the, with the slowdown that we're seeing, we're still, there's still a lot of construction going on. So we have approximately 32 active subdivisions that are, that are still building throughout the district. And then we have 16 that are in the pipeline. So those are coming on board too. And again, they may be slowed a little bit, but they're still in the pipeline. So they still are going to be coming our way. From the active subdivisions, we have approximately, by our estimation, about 2,300 lots that are in some form of construction, different levels. But we have about 2,300 that are, that are currently underway. As far as the process goes, as I said, we had two meetings last week. And then we also will be receiving, much like we did with the, with the Eagle Mountain High School, residents, if they have questions or concerns or comments, that they can go on the Let's Talk as well and submit those questions or comments there. And we would respond accordingly. And then those questions would be put into an FAQ document, and they would also be included on the website in order for others to go and, and view those as they, as they desire. Timeline, tentatively, we're looking at, of course, we'll present tonight, and then we'll take whatever comments that you guys may have. And we'll take those back. And then anything that we, we get between now and the December 12th meeting, we'll consider those things and possibly accommodate whatever concerns that may come in. But we're tentative looking at December the 12th to come back and present to you a, a proposed map for your consideration and approval. Key points, I'm going to go over those. These are the, just the things that we, either we considered or that it kind of gives the outline of exactly where the boundaries are. So it makes more sense whenever I go over it with the, the map up on the screen. So the attendance zones themselves, I mean, the, the numbers, the top chart, there's really only four schools that are going to be impacted by Hatley Elementary. So we only included those four as far as showing the numbers. So the top chart does show the, the current elementary forecast for the next 10 years if we were to not have Hatley Elementary. So you can see the reds and then the, the yellow-ish colors. Those signify either where we are at 5%, within 5% of capacity, or that we're actually exceeding capacity. So the bottom chart shows those same four elementaries, but also adding Hatley Elementary at the bottom. So you can see where the Comanche Springs concerns that we may have for enrollment are pretty well alleviated. Eagle Mountain still has some in the 26, 27 school year, but we anticipate or are hoping that by that time, we would probably be opening Elementary 19 at either one of the sites, whether it be North Point or Chapel Hill. So those, the opening of that elementary would pull numbers off of Eagle Mountain Elementary. So that would be alleviated as well. Elkins still shows some, but as you can see, it really levels out, and then it kind of starts to, to decline. And so there's some, there's some also, there's also some things that we can do with Elkins as far as, we have, we have pre-K there, so if we needed to do something with that. And we have some options as far as being able to move some things around to where we can, to increase some capacity there if, if that were to become an issue. So this is the proposed map. And so these were, I was going to say, So this is the proposed map, and so these are, where I was going to say, I'm going to go over just kind of the key points that we, that we looked at. So Hatley is, I'm not sure exactly where I'm looking or pointing. So you're familiar where Hatley is, the, the, to the east of Hatley is Waggly Robertson, and so that runs north and south. That will become the east-west divider. So the students that currently reside either in Barcy Ranch or Waters Bend will remain at Comanche Springs. So the, the west side of Waggly Robertson, on up all the way to Bonds Ranch Road, so you're going past Savannah Estates, that will move to Hatley Elementary. On the, let's see here, there is a little, well, let's see, the following areas, so moving from Bryson Elementary School to Hatley, we've got Norfolk Estates, that's going to be moving, Glen Mills Village and Glen Mills, just right there on the east side of Old Decatur Road, and then the Standard at Marketplace Apartments. Those are all going to be moving from Bryson over to Hatley Elementary School. And then the, if you look at the, where on, on the map, basically right where it says, where it has the word Bryson and the star, just to the lower left of that, there's a little sliver that shows to be in blue, which would be in the Bryson area. So that is actually part of the ranch at Duck Creek. You've heard us talk about that several times. There's about 361 homes that are going to be going in to the entire ranch at Duck Creek. But that little portion that, that we changed to a color of blue actually has connector streets that go to the backside of Quarter Horse Estates. So Quarter Horse is actually a Bryson feeder, so it made sense to us to go ahead and section that off and pull those into Bryson. So those kids can really just use those same connectors and walk or ride their bike or, you know, however they choose to get to school. So that's a small portion of the, the ranch at Duck Creek as well. Let's see. The northern boundary on the, on the west side of Saginaw Main 287, basically is just to the south of the John L. Price Maintenance and Transportation Facility, and it'll run east-west over to, actually run to the west over to the future Fleming Ranch Road. So that'll be the northern boundary, so that'll include, the North Point subdivision will also be attending Hatley. Let's see, and then, of course, we, you know, we do, as I mentioned, we have the two sites, one that we're calling at this point, just because of locale, North Point, and one that we're calling Chapel Hill. And so those are, those are included on the map as well. So those potentially could be elementaries 19 or 20, or vice versa. So that, like I said, that would pull numbers off of Eagle Mountain in the coming years. I think that's really what we've got. Yes. So I can answer any questions or if you have any comments?
What's the capacity for Hatley?
I'm sorry?
The capacity number for Hatley?
Eight hundred.
Yes.
Are there plans to extend or to widen? Is it Waggly Robertson? Is that what goes between Bonds Ranch and Bailey Boswell on the east side? What's that road called, the one that jog?
That's Waggly Robertson.
Plans? Because that thing looks like that's going to get a lot of use. I would assume everybody coming from the other side and coming over the bridge, or Bonds Ranch to that, and that road's not very good.
So I'm not aware right now of any upgrades to that because the developers didn't, I think, impact these, it appears, so that'll have to be thought about, like, four or five more.
Got a question on the capacities. They're different from Bob's, and the schools that you listed here, they're, and some of them are quite a bit different. Do we know why that is?
Talking this?
Like Eagle Mountain is, was, and Bob's report is 670 capacity at 745 on your.
Trying to live those capacity questions.
How we say on Bob's, he does not have the current with our program, how we move the pre-K around, I think that would be the problem.
We get, I mean, since all four of them were different, could we just do a rationalization there and make sure he has the same data we're using if we have better, better and more accurate capacity numbers? Anything else?
Well, the only general comment is, it's, I don't know if there is a way to reduce the, well, Elkins, for example. It, it actually doesn't get reduced very much at all, and we're opening a school of 228 kids and one over capacity. Is there not another group to grab there that you could find?
Nothing would be continuous.
Uh huh. Can't, because Bryson also has some room, a couple hundred kids' room, it looks like.
Right.
So can you go Elkins to Bryson to Hatley or not?
We could, I mean, you could consider moving them, but you've got Bailey Park, which is brand new, it's got 50 homes, even though that report didn't show any of the changes. So all those are going to come online very quickly. How quickly that is based on what his projection was, that's the reason we recommended the Ducks, Duck Creek, whatever.
Ranch industry. Are those your ducks or the?
I don't get to talk down on that one. So what I think, what we're trying to do is look at it every year, and if it kind of blends, if we can keep options from growing, and Bryson continues to have that room, when those houses come online, that's what we'd like to consider.
So you think, you think Bryson will come closer to that 600 number? Because the capacity under the proposed attendance zone doesn't take it there for 10 years.
But every year, Bob's numbers, depending on what they project, will change based on the, like, that's a 10-year projection. If he comes back next year and things have been changed with interest rates, those numbers will accelerate. So it's all based on those houses, as far as.
The only problem I have with that, and that's why I tried to ask Bob when he left, is he, he was showing Bryson had no houses. Is that not right?
I think we have to agree, Bob.
Okay. That's what I was trying to ask him when he left, and I didn't do a very good job, but shown Bryson, zero start, zero foreclosing, zero, zero, zero.
We'll get to the re-bottage of that.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Maybe all of those at that bottom category that you highlighted, it did seem like there was a definitely disconnect between these two presentations. Any other?
So that's something that we can bring to you in a board update, or would you prefer us to bring that back in a board report prior to consideration of action?
Okay, the board update, when you look at it, and we have a question, and we'll say, hold on.
Because we can do that, we can always, we'll send that in an update, and if you'd like to have another report before we consider action, then we can certainly do that, put action to January. And so we'll have an apples to apples, especially with the, if there's an effect on the special programming that exists. And if there's other things that, as y'all see with Bryson, some of this obviously is challenging in this particular zone. Six months ago, we thought we would fill it out, we thought Welch was going to go that quickly, and it turns that quickly, and the economy and the housing market, we tend to move very, I mean, it could be different in six months from now, so.
So that's why I'm nervous about changing something very quickly, just kind of letting watch it, if the interest rates and houses come in.
Well, and he said the spring would really, would the first two, they'd say the spring would give us a more clear picture.
Well, and we have multifamily, that, that report didn't show, that was just housing charts.
Right.
We've got multifamily also coming online.
Okay. It should be in his numbers?
Yes.
If in the update, you can just get us from the discrepancies between what we saw and the two, and why we think this is the right course of action.
And then as we set attendance zones, like we already have the Eagle Mountain High School attendance zone, right? So can he give us the 10-year forecast by secondary campuses by adding that one in there? Wouldn't be a reason not to, it's getting ready to open another year.
We can, but it will, it will grab on, it will not be accurate on the existing campuses because it grabs all the kids.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Like it started this year.
Right.
So that's the only.
He'd have to run two reports, I guess.
It would be two different reports, you just have to realize which one we live in.
Right, okay. Same with the Hatley Elementary, once those, once we approve the attendance zone, be it December, January, whenever, it could also be added into the. See, y'all did a good job of doing that on your, on your report, where it showed the different ones.
Yes.
Okay.
Because those numbers, because it grabs all the kids as we were doing in all, you know.
As if it was today.
Yes. So that lowers your existing campus, as you're pulling from or moving.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have EMS ISD Police Department, and we have a couple of reports from Chief A couple Saginaw MOUs.
Two reports. First of all, the Madam President, Superintendent, members of the board, this is a phenomenal facility, it's amazing how much this district has grown over the years, and to see what this has become, and I'm glad to be part of it. So the first board report is going to be the MOU with the Saginaw Police Department or City of Saginaw for their SRO program. The agreement shall be, actually started October of 2022, the effective date, and shall continue in full force until January 1 of 2023 unless terminated earlier in accordance with provisions of this agreement. The agreement may be extended by mutual written consent of both parties to extend it a year at the fiscal year 2023. So this, again, is just continuation of our SRO, current SRO program for the next month. I can tell you, we will have our officers in place. We are hiring the last three on the 28th of November, so we'd be fully staffed, the staff that you guys authorize, and so that's why we're comfortable with ending this MOU at the end of the year.
At this time, we have all Saginaw schools are covered by the EMS ISD Police except for Highland and one of the two officers at Saginaw. With our police department, we moved to two officers at our high school. One is Officer Dunk, Saginaw Police Officer that has been there, and then in addition of an EMS ISD officer. So those will be transitioned. We have officers in the works right now going through the system. It takes time for that to transfer for T. Cole and all that to work out, and so they're working through HR right now. So we hope, and we really feel like this date is going to be more than satisfactory for us to have officers and complete the transition. That's correct.
All right, the next board report I'm going to have is, again, a memorandum of understanding with the Saginaw Police Department on behalf of our police department. The purpose of this MOU is to set out a common understanding of policies and procedures that Saginaw Police Department and the EMS ISD Police Department will follow in providing police services to Eagle Mountain Saginaw ISD Schools in the City of Saginaw, Tarrant County, and the State of Texas. This MOU is a formal agreement that will clarify jurisdiction, define parameters and areas of responsibilities, and establish a spirit of cooperation to enhance the services that both agencies provide to the citizens residing within the city of Saginaw. Again, this is just to report purposes, only if you have any questions, I'm more likely to answer.
I don't see any, thank you. Thank you. Moving on to our education services reports, first we have a district and campus improvement plan update. Dr. Perker.
Good evening, board members. I'm on page 56 of the plan. It's great to see you, your new location. I think we are going to have to say a few words about the new building, how appreciative we are. I'm excited to present our 2022 district improvement plan, as you are aware, for Education Code 11.252A. A district will develop a district improvement plan to address the needs of the district. In addition, you have at your seats, the, on jump drives, the entire plans for the district as well as the, I mean, the campus plans as well as the district. Please know that these are fluid plans and they're reviewed every three months, so some changes do occur. As we move through tonight's plan, I will tell you, the key word is alignment. We start with the alignment to the district strategic plan, Aspire 2025. To complete our plan, we will do, we have done a data review, comprehensive needs assessment, we've created goals, and created performance objectives. There's a total of 27 performance objectives, though quite a few because we've engaged our departments, and I'll highlight some of those as we go through. I promise not to read the entire plan. We also have, I also have included your three board goals as required by TEA. As I said, we look at our current status, status through CNA and data and needs analysis. We have found that our reading math, as well as our special education, continue to be a focus, focus areas, and we are working on increasing participation in our GT and advanced academic courses. To address this, we have responses and strategies created, which include tier-one instructional focus, as well as continuing the work of supporting learning through goal-setting, visuals, social, and emotional and physical health. You see here, the alignment to aspire 2021, I mean, 2025, I don't know where 21 came up, but excellence in academics, goal one, we are looking at providing quality tiered instruction in a systematic intervention in a positive and engaging learning environment to ensure high levels of success for every student. Directly aligned to these goals are performance objectives. I'd like to highlight a few of the 13 goals we have here. You'll notice the first two are, the first one is on academic achievement with a minimum growth of 2%. You're going to see the same in the board goals that we have for early literacy and math. The second goal is a behavioral support goal with 100% of our campuses implementing an evidence-based tiered system of behavioral support to meet the behavioral needs of our students. We've discussed often, coming out of the pandemic, this has been a critical need. So we've included, included it in our plan. Moving to the second page, we have, here you see our goal for our NTSS process with 100% of the campus implementing that process for intervention. Counseling is under Performance Objective 7, maintaining, creating and maintaining a system of support where both staff and student social and emotional needs are met. As you can see, I've added the connection to the aspire objective as well, so you can see that alignment. Performance Objective 8 was provided to us by the HR department, where leaders will be equipped with the essential skills to identify, hire, and capitalize on the talent of personnel in such a way that it benefits the campuses and departments in achieving goals. The final goals I'd like to highlight, again, are having to do with the student social and emotional learning supported across classroom, schools, homes, and communities. That is our coun, one of our counseling goals. And looking at that last one, which is our CCMR goal, directly connected to the goals I'll show at the end of board goals, where we're developing multiple pathways to ensure success beyond graduation for personalized learning experiences. Those all cover goal one, excellence in academics. Moving into goal two, we have excellence in personalized opportunities, where we're working to support a culture of trust and growth through personalized opportunities and collaborative experiences for staff, students, and community members to achieve desired results. With this, we have, this is our second pillar, and we have nine, eight performance objectives, and I'd like to highlight a few of these. Performance Objective 1 is all focused on personalized opportunities, and this is with building capacity of our administrators, building their growth. Performance Objective 2 is goal-focused for our student-set academic and behavior goals. You probably recognize several of these goals in here also aligning to our superintendent's evaluation. Alignment is key. The technology goal is under Performance Objective 3, and our bilingual goal is Objective 4. As we move into the second part of Goal 2, personalized opportunities, again, we're looking at communication, increasing our community partnerships and involvement to enhance learning environments, as well as fostering a culture that provides all students opportunities to take ownership of their learning and growing the skills represented in that EMS profile of the graduate. Our fine arts objective is number seven, and our professional development is Performance Objective 8. As we move into our last goal, excellence in organizational improvement, this is all about safe and structured learning environments, as well as increasing systemic processes and procedures. With that, we have two specific objectives. The first one is all about protocols for our safe and secure environment, and I'm very pleased of our work that we have been doing there already, excuse me. And Objective 2 is all about continuous improvement in the use of our Plan Do Study Act, PDSA model. Also wanted to bring forward the, the board goals and give you just a quick update. Remember, these are five-year goals. We talked about these in our team of eight training, and this is part of that TEA requirement. Early childhood literacy goal, this is a percent of, the percent of third-grade students whose scores meets grade level or above will increase from 41 to 55% by June 2024. I'm pleased to say that we had a 9% growth from 2021. In early childhood math, again, we're looking at that meets. In early childhood math, again, we're looking at that meets level, and we had an 11, showed an 11% growth on 2021, from 2021. CCMR, we did not see the growth that we desire, but we have a strong department, actually three key departments, counseling, CCMR department, as well as our KATE program working to increase that. We were at 54% in this past year. But we do expect within the next two years to be at our goal of 73%. Lots of goals, lots of work to be done, and I'm proud to say that the alignment and the work that we're doing, we're very collaborative, just part of the EMS ISD way. Do you have questions?
Questions? All right. And next, we have a local policy from Tasby pertaining to child nutrition. Ms. Parker?
Good evening, President Ring, Dr. Chadwell, and board. Thank you for your continued support of our students and staff here in Eagle Mountain Saginaw. And tonight, I bring for your consideration COA local, which has to do with the procurement of needs, foods, and stuff like that for the students. Since we're moving back to our pre-pandemic of not everybody gets a free meal automatically, we needed to change just a couple of things on this local policy so that we're including the Director of Purchasing back into this policy instead of just the Director of Child Nutrition. So our plan is to show it to you tonight and bring it back next month for approval. Any questions for me?
Will we be making decisions jointly? Or either, it says and, is it really or, or is it and?
It's an and.
It is an and.
It is an and.
All right.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes our reports. Wonderful. So it is currently 5:44 PM on November 14, 2022, and the board will now recess for dinner and then reconvene in a closed meeting pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, for the purpose of private consultation with the board's attorneys; Section 551.072, for the purpose of deliberating a purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property; Section 551.074, for the purpose of deliberating the appointment, employment, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee; Section 551.075, for the purpose of deliberations regarding deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices or security audits; Section 551.082, to consider discipline of a public school child or a complaint or charge against personnel; and Section 551.0821, to discuss specifically personal identifying information about a student.
Dr. Huck, can you hear us well?
Testing, 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 Walter, yes.
All right, ready? It is currently 7:00 PM and this is a public meeting of the Board of Education of Eagle Mountain Saginaw Independent School District. The board is reconvening in this public meeting at 7:00 PM on November 14th, 2022, and we will now consider the subjects set forth in the posted agenda. Welcome to our new board room for our first inaugural meeting here. We're very excited to have you all with us this evening. We have an opening ceremony, Marine Creek Middle School. Dr. Gallagher?
This is Paige, School Board, Chadwell, Executive Cabinet, and Eric Vollbar, MSI's meeting supporters. We're extremely grateful that you need to be the first one in the first year.
The exercises, and so tonight, well, the microphone just came on, didn't it? Tonight, I want to welcome four of our Marine Creek Middle School Mustangs. First is Mr. Derek Matumbo. Derek is a seventh grader at Marine Creek Middle School. He loves the NBA, and he's really involved in his church. He's accompanied tonight by his mother, Lena Mambaya. Can you stand forward real quick? Thank you. Awesome. And then we also have Jackson Sanders here with us tonight. He's a sixth grader at Marine Creek Middle School. He's a participant in our Destination Imagination team. He loves computers, likes cooking and architecture. He's really family oriented. He's actually got a twin brother, Bryce, who's not with us tonight. I told him, you know, hey, if this doesn't go well, just tell everybody it was Bryce. I mean, that's the way it goes, right? So he's accompanied tonight by his mother, Karen Sanders. And I also have Jackson Pierce with us here tonight. Jackson is an eighth grader. He is a member of NJHS Football, Basketball, Track Band. He's in all GT classes. He's in his youth band at church. He has been a U.S.O.L. Nationals, he went to U.S.O.L. Nationals in August. He's first chair all district for the Tuba last month. So he's like, if you throw it at him, he's going to do it, and he's going to do it well. And he's accompanied tonight by Mr. Scott Pierce. His father, sorry. And then I also have Acacia Soder here with us tonight. Acacia is involved in tennis in band, and she loves music and neurology. She wants to be a doctor eventually. And in the new EMS Proud magazine that's coming out, you might see her. She got to come down and be in the facility and take some pictures. So just, you know, you'll be able to see her coming up. And so without further ado, oh, and she's accompanied tonight by her mother, Anne Marie Soder. My apologies. So awesome. I'll turn it over to Derek.
Thank you, Dr. Gatlin. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Now please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance of the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now please join me to the Pledge of Allegiance to the Texas flag. I am on the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Marine Creek Middle School. We did finish all of our reports in the five o'clock session, so we can move right into action items this evening. Our first action item is to conduct a public hearing for the school's first rating. Mr. Rob Welch.
Good evening, President Ring, Dr. Chadwell, Board of Trustees. Tonight, we do have the school first rating for the 2021-22 school year. And with that, we have a short presentation. We'll go over a couple items within it, and then we would step into the public meeting as part of that. So this is the 20th year of the School Finance Integrity Rating System of Texas, commonly referred to as School First. Our rating for the 2021-2022 school year is based upon the financial data from the 2020-2021 school year. Each year, districts are assigned a financial rating based on a list of 20 indicators. While most indicators provide a range of points, some indicators are yes/no questions that are critical for a passing rating, and several other indicators impose a ceiling on the final rating that a district can achieve. So for the 2021-22 school year, Eagle Mountain Saginaw ISD earned a school first rating of A for superior achievement with a score of 96 out of 100 points, as well as passing all of the critical indicators. If you are keeping track, you will notice that this is a repeat of last year's financial rating, and that the district earned the same score of 96 and a rating of A as well. Starting on page 86, there are a few indicators noteworthy to point out, including number six regarding fund balance trends. While the optimum fund balance is no longer a required audit component, TEA still provides their emphasis on the fund balance as an indicator of financial health with a review of the three-year average trend in a minimum of 75 days. EMS ISD passes this indicator as we work to maintain the appropriate fund balance levels for safely operating the district and also meeting the expectations of our bond rating agencies. Moving on to page 87, another notable indicator is number 13, which reads, "Was the school district's administrative ratio equal to or less than the threshold ratio?" The point ranges are based on the size of the district's ADA. For a district our size, maximum points start at a ratio of 8.5%, and points are still awarded up to 18.5%. Well, EMS ISD comes in at an efficient 7.01% and to earn the maximum points in this indicator. Also, as a requirement of the annual report, the prior year's ratings information and indicators are provided as well in the report. The annual report also includes disclosures or certain disclosures, including the superintendent's current employment contract, reimbursements to the superintendent and board members for travel and other district-related purposes, any outside compensation for the district. As I scroll to that point, give me a moment here as we move through the superintendent's contract, we'll move to the tables here. As we said, several of the disclosures also include any outside compensation for the superintendent, as you see here, none, and any gifts received by the superintendent or board members and any business transaction between the district and board members during the reporting period. I'd be glad to provide additional information about the report, whether it's the indicators or any of the information. Otherwise, I'll remind the public that the report of the 2021-2022 school first rating will be available on the district's website under the finance webpage. And then, as I conclude the report, I would like to express my appreciation to the financial team of the district, which includes all those that work with financial decisions and processes daily, whether that's on campuses, within our departments, or the work of the team in the Financial Services Department as all their efforts go into achieving this rating. As a reminder, tonight's public meeting is informational and does not require action to approve the report. I will now stand aside while we open the public meeting if there are no questions.
Any questions on the report? All right. Then at this time, on behalf of the Eagle Mountain Saginaw ISD, I declare an open hearing on the 2021-2022 school first report. The hearing is open to the public for comment. Any and all persons who wish to address the board on this matter are invited to come to the podium at this time. I hereby declare the public meeting on the first report open. Anyone? Okay. I declare the public hearing on the 2021-2022 school first report closed. Please be advised that a copy of this report will be posted on the district's website for further public review.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to action item B, to consider approving the 2023-2022-2023 City of Saginaw MOU.
I move we approve the 2022-2023 City of Saginaw Memorandum of Understanding for the School Resource Officer Program as presented earlier.
Second.
We have a motion by Donna and a second by Marilyn. Is there any discussion? None. All those in favor? Any opposed? And there are none. Motion carries seven zero. No ballot this one, sorry. And then next, we have Consider a Second MOU of Understanding Between the City of Saginaw on behalf of the Police Department. Do you have a motion?
I move we approve the Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Saginaw on behalf of the Police Department and EMS ISD on behalf of the Police Department as presented earlier.
Second.
I have a motion by Donna and a second by Marilyn. Is there any discussion on this one? See none. All those in favor? Any opposed? And there are none. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. All right. Moving on to action item D, Consider Approving the 2022-2023 Submission of a Class Size Waiver to TEA. It's turn time.
Good afternoon. It is such a blessing to stand before you in such an ornately and beautifully appointed building. I come to you again to bring before you the class size waiver. We are very equivalent to where we were last year. This time last year, we had three. This time, we have one. And as you can see, this is for Lake Point. This is for fourth grade. And again, it's by that one number, which is 23. So I'd like to entertain any questions that you may have.
I move we approve the submission of the pre-kindergarten through fourth-grade class size exemption as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Steve and a second by Liz. Is there any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Any opposed? There are none. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
And now we have Consider Teacher Abandonment of a Position Without Good Cause. Mr. Melvin?
Good evening, President Ring, Dr. Chadwell, members of the board. I have a recommendation for a contract abandonment for your consideration for this evening, going back to the end of October and beginning of this month. And I'll entertain any questions as well for this particular recommendation.
I make a motion that the board find that good cause did not exist under Section 21105 C2 of the Texas Education Code for Ms. Shannon Matthews to abandon her contract for the 2022-2023 school year. The board did not consent to her resignation, and the board authorizes the superintendent to file a complaint with the State Board of Educator Certification to seek sanctions for her abandonment of the contract.
Second.
I have a motion by Tim and a second by Liz. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Any opposed? And there are none. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our action items. We're moving on to routine monthly reports. Were there any questions or discussion on that?
I just wanted to ask about the quarterly investment report that was in here. It was quite detailed, Mr. Welch. I guess, is this, is this a new report that they've added, this quarterly report from our broker?
They've, they provide us quite a bit of information, and they continue to expand if we request additional. But no, they, they capture all of our various investments as well as our, they provide some economic understanding of what's happening in the market as well. So we have to, we have that third party do that for us to gather all this information.
They ask us for some of those numbers that the plaque, the indicators on the report?
Yes, they do. We provide them some of that information.
At that date, September 30th?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then they, they compile the, the report from, from our various investments as well as, you know, not only the parts that they manage, but also the, our other pools that provide.
They did, are they, did they give you an analysis of that performance for the quarter, really, or just?
They do. You know, they, we, we talked through various strategies and just kind of recap where things are going as part of that quarterly review.
Okay, thank you.
We've had some, we've had some great value out of, out of having them perform that service for us.
I see that. Thank you, Madam President. That was my question.
Any others? All right. And let's move on to review of the 2022 Board Planning Calendar. Dr. Chadwell?
Yes, this is on page 26 of your packet. You'll notice that operations reports under construction, maintenance, and bond projects will be presented. We also have a finance report that we started presenting, I believe, one or two years ago, the history of the relationship of property tax values to outstanding bonds. Under education services, we have ASPIRE 2025 update that Dr. Parker will provide, and also the 23-24 school calendar proposal that Dr. Barnes has been working on. In addition, under action items, if there is an open election for TAD, which I assume there will be, we'll receive information for that. And we also have the potential of additional class size waivers. Under action items, we have the potential approval of the superintendent contract, the approval of the district campus improvement plans that you've received on the jump drive, and any bids and proposals as needed.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Okay, that moves to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion there?
I move we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Liz, a second by Donna. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Any opposed? There are none. Motion carries seven zero. That will take us to board president's announcements. I just had a few. We have Dr. Chadwell's review on November 17th. Remember, we changed that start time to two o'clock, and I gave you all packets of information. If you have any corrections to that, or if you had any questions on that, feel free to contact me between now and Thursday. Otherwise, we will see you at two o'clock for that meeting. And then I wanted to bring up, on behalf of the Education Foundation, they have the Women of Influence event on December 3rd, so mark your calendars for that if you can attend. And then also, and I'm sure Dr. Chadwell will bring this up as well, but remember, December 14th is our holiday open house, and we will be kicking that off with the ribbon cutting here for this facility. So I hope you all can join us for that.
Thank you. We have a few other events coming up. In fact, this Wednesday, we have our Realtor Bus Tour. This is something that will be kind of our first ever event that's being led through our communications department. We'll have a group of Realtors, I think we're up to 60, is that right? Potentially 60, 55? 65? Whoa, okay. So two buses. So it's going to be Realtor Buses Tour, I guess, but we'll have, we're going to go around to different parts of the district, give our Realtors some experiences of seeing our different schools, and learn more about the district. And so we're really excited about that opportunity. We also have the, as President Ring said, we have the Holiday Open House that'll be in this room, and really excited about that and the ribbon cutting, an opportunity for people to see the facility. There'll be some building tours that will be available for those that would like to see the Discovery Labs and other event spaces that, that we have here. And, and finally, we just have another, some other events, winter break, recognitions for January, so forth. I did want to make just a comment. It's really exciting to be here today. I know this has been a lot of work. I made comments in the last board meeting, you know, 140 meetings are some odd for me in the, in the other, in the other boardroom, and now for the flag to go down there and come up here. It's kind of sad a little bit to see that change. I'm a little bit nostalgic, but also very exciting, having eight different families, buildings come together and being able to use this facility. It's amazing how much we can get done just by walking down the hallway and seeing one another and working together. It's been very, very helpful to see that. We're also have had some impromptu groups that have used the Discovery Labs already. We had a group walkover from Chisholm Trail High School to use that in art class because they want to be faster than the other art teachers at the other schools. They wanted to be the first, which was kind of fun. Took a lot of pictures there, and they weren't already scheduled to come back in the spring to use the labs themselves for some work. We also had the Student Voice Committee led by Dr. Parker use that space down there as well. And so we're just, it's just neat to have people come in and be able to use the different parts of the facility as, as, as we get going. So we thank you for your support, for us to be able to come together as an administration in one place, but also want to thank the community that supported this in the 2017 bond as we looked at that. And this is something that we really, of course, want to give back as well as being able to use this facility for the betterment of our whole community. So looking forward to that as the building completely comes fully open for, for our community. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Chadwell. All right. Appearing no further.
One further visit to come before this board. Madam Chairman, I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Donna. We are adjourned at.